Just wanted to make sure we had that note. Okay, so item two also from you, at least to tee it up. Administrator Johnson, use of discretionary unassigned fund balance discussion. And let me say before we begin this, I may have to leave before we complete this across the hall. We're fortunate enough to be hosting with Congresswoman Franco, the U.S. Secretary of Labor. We'll be meeting with some mayors across the hall beginning at eleven forty-five. So I may have to leave here, but you'll be in capable hands with President Paduza.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to do a quick overview to put this into context for the board in terms of the two presentations you're gonna hear. So if we look back at Mr. Parks' presentation to the board on July seventh, the fund balance update. The bottom line summary that Mr. Parks presented, and this was the fund balance at the end of fiscal year twenty. We had sixteen point six million in emergency reserves as is required. Then we had the required minimum unassigned fund balance of five million. Did I? I hit something. And then we had the five point six in discretionary fund balance, which is what is available for the board to consider some of the one-time items we were not able to fund in this year's budget. So when we look at what the board has already approved, at the June fourteenth meeting, the board approved the two hundred and seventy-nine thousand for the police vehicle leases and rentals. You approved the ninety-six thousand two hundred and ten for the clerk's office to cover the cost of the vote by mail ballots. That left five point two five six thousand one hundred and seventy-one dollars in available discretionary unassigned fund balance. And what you are going to hear momentarily is a presentation on funding for City Hall ceiling of eight hundred and thirty-two thousand and police vehicle replacement of one point six million, subject to the support and approval of those two items. That would leave remaining unassigned discretionary fund balance of about two point eight million. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Guzman. He's going to do, I think, the first presentation. Need to get out of. Mario, you can. Come on up and pull yours up.
All right, thank you. Morning Commissioners, Mayor James.
Good morning.
And members of public. Overview of the presentation. Gonna go with the history, our current status, and the future. As you can see, the history, talk about the building age, past concerns, some of the repairs we have done, currently, some of the steps we have taken, and the future, the report findings, recommended action plan, and the implications of deferring repairs.
Mr. Guzman, can you speak closer to the mic, please? So we can.
Better?
Much better.
All right. So a little history. The structure is fifteen years old. Even though we moved in in two thousand nine, keep in mind the structure when it was built, City Hall. So it's roughly fifteen years old. We're experiencing numerous service calls after heavy rainfall from the northern section of the city campus. And that is, you know, including the library. And depending on how much rainfall we have, that's kind of dictates the service calls. It's affecting from the fifth floor to the first floor, departments such as finance, IT, HR, administration, and development services. The facilities team, from when we started to track work orders when we implemented a new system, we have thirty work orders that are dedicated strictly to the leakage from August two thousand eighteen to December twenty twenty. The carpet pretty much gets just wet. We have to come in with fans. So as my says here, you know, team comes in, dries it up, seals conduits, whatever we can visibly see that needs to be repaired, we'll do it there. And depending when the rainfall is, in some instances, we had to vacate the working area of individuals in order to dry that office. So definitely causing a disruption in services and a loss of productivity. Current situation, I just wanted to note that our roof is still under the warranty. That roof gets certified every two years. We have a company come out from Canada and they inspect the roof and certify it. We've conducted mold tests throughout City Hall, and they all came back negative. I didn't do too good in chemistry, but I'm gonna try to pronounce this. Penicillium was found on the second floor administration area, and it was sanitized by an outside vendor. And I just want to note, no air is pure clean. There's always contaminants in the air. It's depending how high those levels get. In this particular case, the levels were way still below the EPA recommendations, but as a proactive measure, we decided to have that sanitized by an outside company. Once again, sanitizing that second floor administration area was a disruption to staff. They could no longer be there, and that was about a day and a half process. So after seeing these sporadic leaks over this time, you know, we tried to do it internally. We called some contractors. We finally contracted with an engineering firm in two thousand twenty to analyze and assess the leaks at City Hall. The report found numerous seal points and a recommended action plan. And I don't know if I mentioned it, though, even though we started tracking things from two thousand eighteen, there has been, you know, calls here and there in two thousand seventeen, two thousand sixteen regarding leak issues. So this is a picture from the report. What I want to show you guys, look how many different services we have here. We have the concrete, we have the stone, we have the windows. Those are all areas that have to be sealed. What they'll do is they'll come in, this will get bit out, it'll get pressure washed, and apply specific caulking and also water repellent on the stone. Once again, I just want to identify the different contact points. You have glass, you have metal for the window, the conduit where the light is. Those are all the areas that are gonna be cleaned and sealed. That's a close-up. So basically, for this particular situation, it's removing that caulking you see on the left-hand side, raise the stone, reseal it with water repellent, and also seal the window area where you see the metal where it's buttoned up. So pretty much everywhere there's a contact point, be it cement, stone, and metal, is where we're gonna be sealing. We're gonna go out to bid to seal for City Hall. Just some more pictures of the contact areas. You can see how you have some areas where it's open. Pretty self-explanatory. That's throughout the building, we're seeing that. So the engineering report, what were the findings? As I stated earlier, numerous points of contacts that need to be sealing. Typically, on commercial sealants, they last anywhere from fifteen to twenty years. What we're experiencing is a premature failure of that sealant. The existing leaks are sporadic, but they will increase over time. The recommendation from the engineering report, targeted caulking and identified contact points, complete sealing of the structure, clean, remove existing caulking, repair stones, level stones, and apply repellent. According to the engineering report, this would put the structure to a new status and could last anywhere from fifteen to twenty years to be leak-proof. Estimated budget, eight hundred and thirty-two thousand. The true cost will be on the solicitation. So hopefully, the construction market dies down a little bit, and we can see even better costs. The engineering firm will be, they provided the scope, and they will be assisting us in the evaluation. I'm gonna discuss some of the implications, the implications of deferring the maintenance. Definitely increased maintenance costs as the team has to come in and dry their carpets. In some cases, they might have to replace the carpets. We're gonna be compromising the structural integrity as water is finding its way into City Hall, damage to carpet, electrical walls, and anything involved in building maintenance. And also, they increased the potential of microbial growth. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. And Ms. Johnson, you may be the better one to answer for this. Have, are we considering some kind of maintenance fund for this building? It's nice to spend eight hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars to get it sealed. It seemed to have, will last for fifteen or twenty years or whatever the time period is, but wisdom says we need to start setting money aside every year to place into some kind of maintenance fund. This building's not gonna get any younger. Is that part of discussions going forward? I know it's a wish list, but we can't shy away from that obligation.
Mayor, it is part of discussions that we have had, but in terms of actively being able to include funding in the proposed budget that the board is going to see here early August, I don't contemplate that you're gonna see that in there just because of the gap that we, you know, still have to close. But again, you know, that will be a discussion after the board. Here's the proposed budget. You wanna move things around to do that, that would be an option.
Well, even if it isn't in next budget year, let's keep it on the radar for the year after that. It may be aspirational, but it's necessary. It may not, and obviously, not just for this building. We need to do an assessment of all of our buildings and start setting money aside for maintenance of these buildings so that we're not stuck with these bills.
So noted.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Guzman? Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. I think to some of my earlier comments with the administrator, I'm supportive of, you know, kind of doing these one-time capital outlays because as you've expressed here, we're looking at not only ongoing bills of remediation, but also disruption of staff, which has an intangible cost. So I think it's really smart of us to try to get ahead of this, seal up, get watertight, and avoid those ongoing disruptions and expenses. So thanks for bringing this forward.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Very much. Do you want to tee something up, Ms. Johnson, or we go straight to? I don't see Chief Morris here.
Captain Clark, I'm just.
Okay.
Good morning. I'm Captain Andrew Clark, recently been assigned to admin services at the police department. Joined today with Sergeant Ray Shaw. He's our logistic supervisor, and on the day-to-day, he takes care of our police fleet. So he's here to answer any particular questions. So today, we're here, we'll give you some information on our current needs for FY twenty twenty-one. We'll go through the vehicle replacement additions estimate, what the purchasing process is, and what it actually takes to build a marked police vehicle currently. In emphasis.
I normally don't let staff delegate up.
Most importantly, if anything, is to discuss purchasing timeline of police vehicles. So we'll go through a detailed inventory of the twenty twenty-one vehicle order estimate. We have some preliminary information for the twenty-two vehicle estimate. And we'll go back and do a historical for the previous incurred budgets as it's related to vehicle purchases. And lastly, I'll make a comment about the maintenance and fuel charges. So currently in our fleet, we have approximately three hundred and seventy-two vehicles, one hundred and seventy-three marked, one hundred and seventeen unmarked, and eighty-two specialty vehicles. That could be anything from a boat to motorcycles to ATVs and things that we use for special operations. For fiscal twenty twenty-one, we have fifteen vehicles that meet the standards to be serviced out through the current FOP, formerly PBA contract. And there's two criteria that those vehicles will fall under. This is the language in the contract, and it really comes down to two things. It goes to eight years or a hundred and forty thousand miles for a marked police vehicle. That's the standard criteria that's being used. And so with that said, this is an itemized list of the specific vehicles that we'll have to take out of the fleet this year by contract, and this will be by age. As I said, there was fifteen, there's thirteen on the detailed list. Two have been lost from traffic crashes. So the two at the bottom here, number five and six, that totals the fifteen. And of course, we have four additional ones that were total loss. One point I'd like to make about that is when we suffer a loss throughout the year for a vehicle due to whatever circumstances, mainly wrecks, we only get a fraction back for the replacement cost of that vehicle. So if a brand-new vehicle's wrecked or whatever, it's obviously prorated down based on age or mileage. So I think this year, we had like six vehicles that were lost, and the funds that were recouped basically only paid to replace one vehicle. Administrator Johnson touched on the grant position, so I won't go into that in too much detail. But initially, when we applied for the grant for the officers, we used a number of fifty thousand per vehicle that was estimated in the cost analysis to take on those officers. Those will be coming online. We've broken that up through fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. We're looking at adding ten additional vehicles for twenty-one, fifteen for twenty-two, and five respectively for twenty-three. And that's just sort of a breakdown of it. The importance here is, of course, how we're gonna break those vehicle needs up. And again, it's ten for twenty-one. Going into twenty-two, it'd be additional fifteen, and twenty-three would be five. How do we buy a vehicle? We use the standardized sheriff's web or sheriff's state contract. We found that that's the most feasible and cost-prudent to buy the vehicle. Going forward, we're looking to replace our marked vehicles with Chevy Tahos, two-wheel drive. And considerations for vehicle selection were based on, but not limited to, the initial purchase price of the vehicle compared to other comparable models that do the similar job. Gas mileage, preventative maintenance costs, and resale value when we take the vehicles out of service, or monies we recruit. So what does it take to build a police vehicle? First, we purchase the vehicle through the state contract. We're given a selection of dealers in our area, which is the southern area, and we typically go and almost exclusively go with the lowest bidder. We'll put the purchase order out for those vehicles, acquire the base vehicle. Because we're building a police vehicle, it requires additional equipment from the dealer. So this will be the option list that requires, that is required for us to make it into a police car. Then we have to build the vehicle out. We use Dana Safety Supply for that, for a total build-out cost to actually physically make it into a vehicle with lights, sirens, cages, all the things that make it a police vehicle for a cost of fourteen thousand six hundred and twenty-one per vehicle. So there is a cost, there is a difference between a new vehicle addition to our fleet and replacing a vehicle. If we're replacing a vehicle, some of the equipment in the vehicle being taken out of service can be reused. We'll take that equipment out and replace that into a new vehicle. That would be considered a replacement vehicle. Some of the things we can reuse would be a police radio, which has about a five thousand dollar expense. So there is a price, that would be the price difference between a new vehicle versus a replacement vehicle. Obviously, if it's a new vehicle, we don't have this equipment. We would have to order that stuff, and that is an additional cost. In modern policing, a police vehicle now is basically an office on wheels. It has a lot of electronics in it. We share and create, transmit, and receive a lot of electronic data from the vehicles. So that requires basically a router in the car that allows us to do all the things that we do in modern policing. That has an additional cost of about twenty-seven hundred or twenty-eight hundred dollars. So that comes down to a total cost to build a police vehicle going forward. So you have a, if it's a new addition to the fleet, you have a cost of about fifty-seven thousand one seventy-two for a vehicle that would include a new police radio. If we're replacing a vehicle, again, we can take that police radio out, put it in the new vehicle for a cost of fifty-two to fifty-seven. The note here is very important. It takes approximately twelve to fourteen months from the time you submit a purchase order to the time a vehicle goes into service. So we're always trying to play catch-up with this if we ever order behind the timeline. So what we're here today discussing for FY twenty twenty-one, that order, in a perfect world, obviously, would have been placed in September of twenty and would just now be coming online. So as we get close to FY twenty twenty-two, that'll have to be a discussion, hopefully, in the very near future because we'll run up against basically the same thing moving forward. We'll be a year out. It takes a long time, obviously, for it to get these things in service. And as we acquire all these new police officers, it'll be difficult to catch up with the fleet. We do have one additional requirement or need for twenty-one. We have community service aides who basically, for the most part, they handle traffic crashes in the busiest part of the days. That's an unsworn position, so some, the guidelines in the contract don't apply to this vehicle. There is a need for one. We don't build it out quite as extensively as a patrol vehicle. So we can utilize a little bit cheaper of a vehicle for that. In this case, it's a Dodge Charger, only because it doesn't require a cage and other things like that that require more safety items. So again, it's the same process. We use the same webs, contracts, state contracts, and we use the same vendors to build the vehicles. In this case, a vehicle for this purpose, if you're including an addition to the fleet, it's a forty-one thousand eight hundred. And then if we're doing a replacement, it's thirty-six eight hundred. Sergeant Shaw has come up with a pretty innovative solution to try to save some money on this. On a temporary basis, we can utilize an existing police vehicle that normally we would take out of service and utilize that as a CSA vehicle. We can do a conversion on that for a cost savings of about, it would only cost us about two thousand dollars in the short term to do that. But again, that is just a temporary fix. Eventually, this vehicle would have to be taken out of service just because maintenance costs and service life. So if we went this route to convert an existing vehicle for a CSA option, you're just extending that. So whether it's twenty-two, twenty-three, this vehicle would have to be factored in at that time. Just to reiterate, so far, we've lost six vehicles for a total replacement cost of about three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. And again, what we get back from risk management is a fraction of that cost. So total FY twenty twenty-one, our needs are nineteen replacement vehicles, ten additions to our fleet, and the one at the bottom would be a CSA vehicle. And there is an option, as I just said, to convert one so we could do a little bit of cost savings there. So we're looking at roughly about a one point six million dollar need for twenty twenty-one. I do have some information. I know we, I think we want to keep this to twenty twenty-one, but if anybody would require or like to see, we will have additional costs for twenty twenty-two. Twenty twenty-two will have some needs for some more specialized vehicles. So there'll be a bit of an increased cost. And the items needed for the grant positions, there'll be a few more of those. Just to take a look back historically at our budgets for police vehicles, in two thousand and eighteen, our fleet was managed by the city's fleet. There was five point three million dollars allocated at that time in two thousand and eighteen. The two thousand and nineteen number is monies carried over from two thousand and eighteen. So that's not new monies, the three point two million. That's, was carried over from eighteen. In twenty twenty, the hundred and thirty-seven thousand was debt service that was also carried over from the initial two thousand and eighteen. I believe it was for some vehicle leases options that they did back in two thousand and eighteen. In twenty twenty, a resolution was passed for six hundred and fifteen thousand, and that's the only amount of new funds that we've had to purchase fifteen vehicles for twenty twenty. And of course, today, we're here discussing twenty twenty-one, which we have not had monies budgeted for that. I just wanted to kind of take a victory lap here while we had the opportunity and just point out that since the police department has taken over the actual day-to-day fleet maintenance and fuel, fueling for our vehicles, Sergeant Shaw deserves a lot of credit for that. We've saved the city approximately half a million dollars each year since we've taken it over.
Thank you for that presentation. Couple of questions. A while back, when I was a commissioner, we had several of the police vehicles that experienced some engine problems. Speculation as to reasons, faulty gas or whatever, and I think there was a lawsuit. Did we recover anything in connection with that? And was that able to be used to either replace those vehicles, repair them? Can somebody give me the update, please?
The last I was told that we haven't received anything, any money from that yet.
All right, Jose Luis, you're walking up. Is that, you have information on that?
Good morning Commissioners, Mr. Mayor. We, we haven't received that reimbursement yet, but that reimbursement is gonna be very minimal. It's not gonna cover anywhere the cost of replacing the vehicles. What we did do when we, when we did get the new engines on those vehicles that had the damaged engines, is that we made an amendment to the collective bargaining agreement. So those vehicles are gonna be taken out of that eight-year, hundred and forty thousand dollar, a hundred and forty thousand mile replacement range. And those vehicles are gonna be allowed, under the new engines, to rack up, you know, additional miles because obviously, although they may be eight years old, they have a brand-new engine. So those vehicles won't be replaced as recently as they would if had the engines not been replaced. But, but yeah, whatever we recovers is gonna be minimal compared to the cost.
Thank you. That leads to my second question. Have we done a cost-benefit analysis with respect to our insurance policy to see if we can get either, I'm sure it'll be more in premiums, but if we could get a higher amount of reimbursement when a vehicle was totaled? It just seems, and I don't know if we've run those numbers, you know, obviously, with the increased premium, justify that or not? the increased premium, justify that or not?
I don't believe we've done that analysis because the way that our policy is structured, and I will research that just to make sure that I can update you. The way that our policies work is just the, we have the standard vehicle policy, so it works the same way as our policies for our personal vehicles or any other commercial vehicle would work, which is that when the vehicle is damaged or it's totaled, they're going to give you whatever that blue book value is in replacement. There's no, I don't think that there's the ability to pay a higher premium to get a higher rate of reimbursement. They'll just reimburse whatever the blue book value of it is.
All right.
Yep.
Okay, any questions? Commissioner Shaw, Commissioner Fox and President, okay.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the presentation. Certainly, I think having equipment for the police department is one of the highest priorities. And I'm glad to see that we're looking at phasing things in over time. And I think that was, I had the same question as the mayor, referring to our insurance, and it's good to know that those vehicles will keep on going. So as, as we look down the line, I think where I guess my, my questions lie, you, you have a lead time of about a year. So the idea is to get ahead of these and start to replace because I think being in a place where we're replacing 46 of our cars, that's a good percentage of the entire fleet, to which that only kicks it down the line another eight years before you're buying 46 vehicles again. So I guess as you've kind of taken this over, looking at the entire picture, have we looked down the line to say, does it make sense to shift a few more cars a year or, you know, try to build up so that we don't end up hitting that 46-vehicle bump somewhere down the road again? And maybe the number's 46, maybe the number's 50 down the road, but just to space those out because I know, again, during that 2008 period, we were at a loss of vehicle replacements. So I'd imagine we, that was part of that road bump of 46. But have we looked from a holistic standpoint to make sure that we're budgeting down the line so that we're not building up that capacity?
So it's, there's multiple factors that go into it. The biggest hurdle would be if there's any delay in doing one-year's order, that creates the snowball effect down the line. So that is probably the biggest obstacle. We can anticipate how many vehicles we'll need based on the contract language. The vehicles that we lose to, you know, for whatever reason, we can't really anticipate, although we can give you a number that is probably an average of what is probably going to get wrecked, so we can sort of anticipate that. And then the only other thing that is sort of the outlier is specialized vehicles. They obviously don't come up as much, so sometimes that's a little harder to determine. But really, I think the solution would be, and I know these are trying times, if there's some fixed number that we can commit to that's in the budget going forward every year that we know we can order X amount of cars from. But really, the biggest hurdle is, once you delay, because again, the lead times are so long, and given, the only other factor is if a decision is made to increase our police staff, so if we go from 320 to 350, that has to be factored in as well. And if that's done anywhere outside of the budgeting process, then we would take on that additional expense as well. So it's, it's kind of hard to determine-
Got it.
Because our operating is so fluid, based on our personnel.
If you had that multi-year commitment, would that be helpful in a procurement environment? Or you're already under state contracts, so you're, you're part of a group purchasing plan anyway. Would it be helpful if there was any kind of commitment down the line in negotiating a multi-year agreement versus a one-year agreement?
Yeah, the contract doesn't change, per se. I mean, the monies might change a little bit, but yes, I think, I think it would be helpful if there was some type of commitment in the budget for that.
Understood. Thank you.
Commissioner Fox and Commissioner Peduzzi.
Thank you very much for this presentation. I'm very supportive of you having the equipment you need and also the building maintenance. So I think my question is more for Administrator Johnson. I'm just curious if you could remind us of what the unassigned fund balance can be used for. I know in one of the early slides, it said if we commit to these two items, there would be 2.8 million left in this fund. And one of your slides said for 2022, you were looking for possibly 2.4 million for additional cars. So I'm not sure if you can just let us know a little bit more about what this fund can be paid for, whether it is, you know, putting it towards these cars going forward or some of the deficits that we're looking at. I'm just curious if you can just let us know a little bit more about that. Thank you.
Commissioner Fox, given that it's discretionary unassigned fund balance, it can be used for any of the general fund operational expenses. Fund balance typically is used for one-time capital purchases. So in terms of the remaining 2.8 million that you would have left, could it be used for the 2.4 million that they would need for FY 22? The answer is yes. And not that the board needs to operate on my recommendation, but I would recommend that you not make that call at this point because we are still finalizing where we're going to end up with FY 21 budget. And there may be a need to use a portion, if not all of that 2.8 million, depending on where we end up with the overtime. The overtime right now is trending higher than what is budgeted, so we may need it for that, or it may be some other things. So I would just ask that if that is the pleasure of the board, that you wait until we at least get to the end of this fiscal year and look at where we are and then have that discussion on how you want to use that 2.8 million, would be my recommendation.
All right, President Peduzzi.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a question about take-home versus line vehicles. We know there's plenty of studies out there that show that take-home vehicles tend to last a lot longer for a number of reasons. How are our vehicles utilized? And then I have another follow-up question after that.
I'm sorry, could you repeat?
How are our vehicles currently utilized? Are, do we have vehicles that are line vehicles that are used shift after shift? Or are vehicles used as take-home vehicles by our officers who live in the area?
So there's two types of officers. Basically, you have probationary officers and, and officers that have met probation. Typically, we do try to utilize the take-home program. We can't do that in all cases, but we do try to do that because for the sustainability and the lifecycle of the vehicle, it is, in almost every study, shown that it will out-survive a, basically what we call a hot-seated car, where a guy pulls in, they get out, they take their stuff out, somebody else gets in. Those cars just do not last because they, they just drive them into the ground. So we do try to do that and optically, it might not look like you're saving money, but it certainly is in the long run. So we do try to use that, with the exception of the probationary officers, I think unless they live in the city. So once they make probation, that's typically about a year to year and a half, we try to assign them a vehicle to sustain our fleet.
Thank you. Just brief follow-up. With regard to, I know that traditionally, police departments have used gasoline engines, but police vehicles are often driven very hard, as you know, and, and just the demands that are placed on them. Have there any been any studies, has anyone looked at utilizing hybrid or E vehicles? You know, because I would think that you could get the same or much better performance without driving it as hard, and maybe those vehicles would last significantly longer. I don't know if there, have we looked into that before, for the long term, anyway?
For admin-type purposes or like a patrol-type function?
Patrol.
I'm not aware of that. Perhaps Sergeant Shaw could speak to that. I do know in the past that we bought some sedans for administrative and unmarked, plain-clothes purposes. I myself drive one. They're very expensive to fix when they do break, you know, batteries, $8,000, $9,000 just for a battery. Sergeant Shaw might be able to speak to it.
Ford's probably the biggest one pushing their hybrid utility right now.
Talking to the man because we're taking, making, we're taking-
I'm sorry. Ford's probably the biggest one pushing their hybrid utility right now, which we did TNE a while back. We brought one into the police department. The guys did like it. Unfortunately, it's $7,000 more than a Tahoe is. So when you add that $7,000 just onto the price of each and every vehicle, it's kind of hard to push that to you guys. I got to come and ask for 2 million instead of 1.6. It also, but also, we have a Chevy Volt that's at the dealership right now, and it's $8,600 to fix it. So that, those costs just, to me, aren't effective.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you so much. This was very helpful in understanding the resources that are needed for our residents, business owners and guests. I'm curious if you can share with us a little bit more about the breakdown of the take-home vehicles versus vehicles that are used for other staff? Do we have detailed numbers on those so we can get a better understanding of where and how these vehicles are being used?
I, I don't have those exact numbers, but I'd be more than happy to put that together and send it to you, absolutely.
Awesome. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mayor. My question, I think more is for you, Administrator Johnson. I'm certainly very supportive of getting very much-needed equipment to the police department. And if we're looking at unassigned fund balance this year, certainly something to consider. But as we can see from the fund balances, that's not a maintainable strategy going forward. Being that these are union-negotiated requirements, did we have a contingency plan of some other fund source to, to fund these from, knowing that they'll come down the line and knowing that they're going to come down the line in the future?
Commissioner Shaw, at this point, we do not. That is something that, again, is on the discussion table. You know, there are just a number of items that we need to start doing contingency planning for that, but for last year, where we were, we just have not.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think that's something really important to consider. We know things are coming down the line and just by the numbers, it's not sustainable to continue to use unassigned fund balance, not to mention, to your point, some of the other things that may have to come from unassigned fund balance. So certainly supportive in any way we can be helpful to identify additional sources of revenue to look at this in the future.
Any other questions? Well, thank you, gentlemen, very much. You've laid out the situation in very stark terms. Thank you.